Say good morning, everyone. We're going to ask you to stand. Open your plates. Fathers, once again, we come today together to conduct this county. Lord, we thank you for this day and all your blessings and your mercy. And we ask your guidance and wisdom, Lord, that we conduct this business. And we just ask that we make the decisions that are a blessing for the citizens of this county. We thank you for the privilege to serve. We all praise you in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item on our agenda today would be the approval of our minutes from August 6th and August 18th.
Mr. Chairman, I would like one thing looked at on that on the minutes on page 1479, Dane Post of Orlando Journal, and it says that Commissioner Owen made a motion to authorize the county attorney to challenge to modify the current spray drill option to purchase as discussed in closed session. I would request that that motion be stated what the motion was.
The motion is, it is stated in the closed session minutes, and that is the purpose of stating it this way. There were things at this point were not able to be disclosed, and if those, the details of it can be viewed in the closed session minutes. I don't know if you look at those minutes, Commissioner Feldman, but they are available.
I was just thinking it would be good to have these minutes in so that his public knowledge, so in the future, the public would know what the motion was.
Well, again, it's a separate set of minutes, and they are available or need to know, and that motion will be disclosed at some point when the business items are to a point where they can be released. Any other corrections? One page. 1477. Where you have Ms. Gwen Howell-Harrell. You have her as tax assessor, should be deputy tax collector. Any other corrections? If not, we'll call for a motion to approve the minutes of August 6th and 18th as modified. Submove.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. All right, our next item on the agenda would be the adjustments to our agenda. We have several adjustments under item 88. We need to add an item 9, which is to set the date to meet with the court extension. And review the webinar. Are there any more adjustments? If not, we'll call for a motion to approve the agenda as modified. Submove.
Second.
Nice motion, second, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. All right, the first item on our agenda, agenda would be delegations. Citizens coming, please. Okay, our first review is Wade Askey.
Good morning, Commissioner and Manager. I'm Wade Askey, I'm from York, and this one, I would know a lot of people would have different concerns than what I would, but if you would ask someone, they would probably say taxes, some people would probably say zoning or subdivision ordinance. But today, I would just like to speak on water quality, and I believe our state and all over the country, that's beginning to be a very serious issue. I believe that there are a lot of things that a commissioner and even planning board and all to learn if they have a class taught on water quality. Not only to teach about quality of water, but to also teach or show that financial tools that are available, such as, you know, low interest or grants or whatever. And I've noticed that each year, if you go back, Virginia Beach, this past summer, they closed a beach, at least, I think it was twice, two weeks up town almost. North Carolina at Danaher, so they even thought that one time they made that further beach because of water quality. Just speaking about water quality, yes, here in Gates County, we're very fortunate, very lucky, we have good water right now, but then one day, that water may run out. And what we do here in Gates County doesn't just affect us, it affects all of our neighboring counties, right on down, the river, the sand, and once we lose our estuaries, we're in big trouble then, because that's a big important part of our water quality. And I would like for the board commissioners to take it serious that, that maybe through cooperative extension office, that we get someone to teach a class on water quality for board commissioners, the planning board, board adjustments, and all citizens that would be, you know, would like to attend. But just speaking on water quality, I'm a chicken farmer, and two or three years ago, the rates were, were there need to be a separate rate between the businesses and the citizens here in the county. I think the rates are like $10 for the first diet, $3 for every diet and after that. Well, like for a business or chicken farmer, such as mine, the rates should be different. I mean, y'all drain this dry, so to speak. The rates should be done in more of a business level for businesses, like maybe for the first diet, and maybe $30 or $40 for the first diet, and then maybe a dollar or something like that for every diet and after. We, we, the farmers are really a good backbone to the community, to the county, and we pay deer taxes, and I'm asking the board commissioners to take that into consideration and look at a new bill and for the farmers here in the county. And it's just one, one more little thing. I think in all the nine eye counties here in state, whether a citizen wants to go pay their taxes on water bill, they can flip a piece of plastic up on the counter, and they can pay it without any consequences or any charges, and that's a benefit that is very beneficial to the citizen. And it's not only just beneficial to the citizen, it's beneficial to the county, but not having to pay a fee to use that card is beneficial to the county as well. It's better for the county to be able to collect that money in a manner of time than it is to have to go down the road, and once down the road, they're not able to collect it. Always remember, a county as strong as a financially strong county, a county is cheaper to operate than a financially weak county. That's just like any citizen, a financially strong citizen, it's cheaper for them to operate. And I would like to thank y'all all very much, and I hope y'all have a good day.
Wade Askey, just wanted, the aesthetic of water quality, is that just freshwater lakes and streams, or are we talking about drinking water and all that?
Well, it would probably be all of it. It's the NC State that just put a floating classroom out in Newbin to teach even the young children more about water quality. This is something that's, I would say it should be on everybody's high priority, water. A lot of, a lot of you don't even know it, but, and I would maybe know it, but years ago, and you, Billy probably knows it, train turned over and you would have had a gasoline tanker on it for nearly a mile and a half, two miles. Aye, people didn't have deep rail back then, but that gasoline, just to show you how it moved through the water, that gasoline moved, you know, two miles out, everybody could smell or taste the gasoline in the water. And did you remember anything, oh, yeah, anything about that, Billy?
The one that wrecked in the sixties was Karen Alunia called.
Yeah, but this was back in the, Dan said it was one back in the late twenties, I think.
I don't remember that.
He, he just remembered that Karen and Dan talked about that people, by two and a half miles out, that their water taste, and they had to get people haul in water, and they'll go all places to get the water. But I just wanted to, you know, bring that to your attention, that that is just to show how, you know, stuff moves through the water. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Okay, I'll just go around.
Well, I had two items that I was going to come by to mention today, but I wanted to ask Mr. Billy Feldman, if he would pursue something here. Maybe I'm completely wrong, Billy, but you know, I've been in this business a long time coming over here and going to other places. And I had always read in the law book and in the commissioner's handbook that when business was done, you can have all, you can have a legal closed session, but the vote was to be come out and go back in regular session. And based on what you're saying, I think you need to pursue this with other commissioners, and let's find out what the law here is, that we have an illegal vote. And just based on one little bit you brought to attention here, I think that was a good point. It's very easy, back for 50 years or so, when Sherwood was chairman of the Austin and the Henry Duffy, they rallied and closed sessions. And I understand the law, but I am going to wonder about this, Jack, be careful about this thing. Of course, in a closed session, you do anything you want to, but later on, you come back and say, well, when was this passed? How was it passed? And I think that was an excellent point, and I just made a little note on that, and I'd like you, we follow up on it. I came here today for two things, but first of all, I want to say that I made a talk over in Elizda City a couple of weeks ago, Jack, and they ended, I was sort of introduced by two people. One of them was the program chairman who stood up and says, all of you in here know Earl Roundtree, so no further introduction. And the second guy, who was the president of the organization, stood up and said, well, I want to make a statement, says I met, had breakfast yesterday with some people over here, and said they asked me, made a statement to me that Earl Roundtree was very opinionated. And I don't know whether that's true or not, but I think it is. And the only difference between me and the rest of the citizens of this world is that I'm either dumb enough to express my opinion or brave enough. And the reason I bring that up is the fact today, September of this year marks a one year, and the word anniversary is not the right word, of the untimely death of Johnny Horr. And as long as I can walk and have the mind to speak, every year, I want to recognize Johnny Horr to the county, on camera, and to the commissioners. I don't know when I really ever first met Johnny Horr. I got thinking about that, and I just don't remember. But I do remember that he had talked about running for county commissioner, but he didn't know whether he was going to run or not. And to me, so finally, he called me up and he said, Earl, I've decided to run. I said, well, Johnny, that's good, but I said Wade Askey has already been to see me, and I said, I've told Wade I would support him, and I'm not going to back down, but good luck. Quite honestly, I didn't think Johnny had a chance, but like all of us that have opinions, we create enemies. If a lot of, if you are jellyfish and you go out with the tide and you come in with the tide, and you don't sting anybody, you don't create any enemies. But when you think about things and create in your mind what ought to be done. And I reminded very much of things that Johnny Horr did, and I want to say to the family, and I'll make a statement later, but, you know, y'all, even as enemies, would have to admit that Johnny Horr was an intelligent, educated, smart guy. And I've said this before, and I'm going to say it every year until I die. Johnny Horr was one man that I spent time with and talked with that did not ever show any problems with his ego. He had a plan, and when he had it in his head, it was in his head, and nobody was going to change it, but he thought it all through. And that's what I really liked about it. But I remember I wanted to share this real quick because I take on some time, but I remember Johnny and I had spent a lot of time talking about what maybe we could do in Gates County for some economic development. And so I told Johnny, he said, well, what about working more through Raleigh? And I said, well, I tell you what, Johnny, I said, at that time, I think I was 70 years old, and I said, well, Johnny, I said, I've got more money. I said, I'm not a rich man, but I'm not hungry. I don't like getting hungry, I don't like getting cold. I said, I will be glad to help the county in any way I can. I said, you pay my expenses. And he ran it by the commission, some of y'all were on the commission at that time, and he said that, well, I didn't get any kind of response. I said, well, just forget it, it's going to save me time and money, the heck with it. But Johnny called me back up and said, hey, I've got another plan. He says, why don't you and I just go on and do it and see what we can do? And I said, okay, so I said, what do you want to start? I said, I, he said, where do you think we ought to start? I said, we need to start with Secretary Decker Commerce. And I said, also, maybe we want to talk to Secretary of Transportation Taylor. And he said, well, I'd be glad to do it. I said, well, I'll set up two appointments. So Johnny and John Minn Hall and I went to Raleigh, and we had a great meeting with Mrs. Decker, and we went over transportation. I thought that was a real thing, because we were in Gates County, I actually got on the phone and called up and got an appointment, and with no problems. Now, I don't know if that had anything to do with the fact that political contributions in the past or not. But anyway, we were headed that way. And this was like, I don't know what year, what month it was, but it was like August. I'm thinking it was summertime before this September. And of course, and we know what happened in September. So I just wanted to make sure that each year, we recognize for the family, and we have our county manager here and there with Roundtree, and I want to kind of, a little bit digress, I guess, real quickly. Johnny was very pushing, and y'all know that, for her to be county manager when Minn Hall was up. And he called and talked about it, and we decided that she was a great candidate. She was here in the county, hopefully she was going to stay. I told her personally not to give her divorce and leave the county. Anyway, Johnny did something that, he called me up and he said, Earl, he said, don't be mad at me, but he said, I voted for, go ahead and voted for Minn Hall to get the job. He said, he said, you and I talked about it, and you said it shouldn't be a five to zero vote for new county manager. And so Johnny gave up, and, but it was a foray, and I agree with him, I mean, because it should have been. But now Johnny's not here to see this, and I think about that greatly because he's not here. Hey, Vice Chairman from another county, I made a statement a couple of weeks back, and I'm, and that, y'all are on the wrong track, in my opinion, because I'm opinion Jack, but, and he picked up on the statement, heard that I had made it, and that they were on the wrong track. So I got this long email from this guy, and, but the start of that email said, I want to say that you are, I'm behind your idea and believe in your idea 100%. And what this was all about, this goes back to Johnny and economic development, and what we were trying to do is, this particular county commissioner in another county recognized the fact that we in the northeast, and he was using this area, he's from this area, and he said, you know, we got to get all the help from Raleigh we can get. And I think that is very important, but the other counties are doing this, and they are, well, Karen took, I think, Dan and Ken been talking about, they were actually going to our office. Reason the guy contacted me was the fact that, well, this goes back to donations, that he knows that I had the personal cell phone number of some of the state representatives, and he was actually conning me to help him. But I knew what he was doing, he's a nice guy. Johnny Horr was disliked by what I would like to think of as a little people, and I don't mean that's economically of scale. What I mean is that people who had, would get angry over least little thing that happened. And I was led to believe that Johnny Horr must have been some kind of monster. And then the more I got to know him, I said, this is one of the nicest guys I've ever met in my life. And I want his wife and children and grandchildren to know that the few distractors out here in this community and this county don't count. I just wish Johnny could run for reelection, because he would have been surprised at the number of people that had voted for him. But life is strange, unexplainable, this sounds like a hindrance preaching a funeral, I guess, but, you know, Johnny was taken out what was almost his pride, mentally pride. We used to think of 65-year-old people, remember being old? The closer you get to it, the younger you going to think 65 is. But Johnny was taken out of his pride. But I'd just like for the wife and the children and grandchildren to know, and for most of the people in Gates County, that Johnny Horr had become love for many of them, and I just want to pass that on today in the honor of Johnny Horr. And if y'all want to say something later, I'll go ahead and finish the second part. I want to say to all of you, anybody here, and to the camera, which will end up on TV, I am not affiliated in any way with the Republican Party in Gates County. I want to report that, say that again. I am not affiliated in any way with the Republican Party in Gates County. The leadership in the Republican Party in Gates County, and this came from the very top Republican in the state, that they had gone off the reservation and become renegades. And the idea of going out here and creating a so-called political stunt against our high sheriff, just because he put up a political sign, put it all over the internet, is inexcusable. Now, the people in Raleigh, the district level of the GOP contacted me. At first, I got an email from a woman in Elizda City, says, what's going on? They thought that I could correct it. I said, I have nothing to do with this, I can't do anything about it, but the only thing I can do is apologize to our high sheriff, Ed Will, that anybody in this county would attack him for no reason whatsoever. Ed, I want to apologize to you and the party of the Republican Party in the state of North Carolina. That's all I got to say. That's enough, one handed, but thank you. I won't have to come back in several months.
Thank you. Okay. We have an announced delegation from David Forsythe, the Admiral of Patrol Enforcement. Not here. Okay, we'll have our administrative reports, first one being the county manager.
Good morning. This report is for July 24th through August the 19th, and I have continued to read files to become more familiar with what has been taking place in the county in the past couple of years, as well as my duties and responsibilities. I've also been accepted to the School of Government's Municipal and County Administration Course, and the dates are listed in the report that I have provided to you. The wills being nine classes, they each start on Tuesday and end in on Friday afternoon. I have attended the North Carolina Cooperative Extension, Gates County Senator's Court to the People, the Gates County Transportation Plan Committee. The Board of Adjustment could not meet on August 19th due to the fact that there was not a quorum present, the meeting was rescheduled, as well as meeting with the planning board. A request for proposal for the subdivision and zoning update was reviewed. RFP is for a consultant to review the board of commissioner minutes for approved text amendment changes to both ordinances and include them in the ordinances. A hired consultant may also make recommendations to the county manager, planner, and the planning board. This will be advertised by September the 1st. One planning board member will sit on the planner interviews that have since been scheduled. Eleven applications were received as of the date that I wrote this, which was August 19th, however, since then, two other applications were received. The Tri-County Animal Shelter would like to thank the Gates County Commissioners for the offer of the cement building, but declines the offer. There is an email that was attached, and we will discuss this later in under new business, and also towards the shelter, and was pleased with what I saw. As of the August 19th, the municipal engineering had not been able to conduct soil testing at potential spray drill site due to inclement weather. Andrews and Company have completed installation of the beams at the historic courthouse. Due to concerns expressed by Andrews and Company to clear scape, additional work will not continue until the issue is resolved. And more information is available in the historic courthouse memo that will be discussed under old business. GMS, EIC, and the Red Cross have been contacted about moving from the EIC building. GMS will be relocated to the former mental health location on Medical Center Road, and EIC will use the small office that is in the lobby of the former mental health building. The Red Cross was using the EIC building as storage. A site within the county has not been identified. However, since this time, they, Red Cross has contacted Billy Wynn, and he did identify a small storage shed out at EOC, and they are using that small storage shed. A final move out date for the EIC building has not been determined. County staff will be cleaning the future gyms and EIC offices so that the move can begin, and I will be in communication with all parties to come to a satisfactory final move out date. You have any questions?
I have a question, Chairman, about the Andrews Company and Clear Scapes conversation. Would you get some detail on that pretty soon as to what they?
We've not received anything other, the historic renovation updates under old business, but we have not received any information from them since that meeting that will be discussed during the old business.
We do have the court of the historic courthouse renovations under item 7, so we'll get something there.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
Well, like the EIC building, I see that Mrs. Beasley is here today. Have y'all determined a date for moving your stuff?
No, we were going, I had some issues that we needed to discuss later during closed session.
I was just thinking about trying to get some volunteer labor.
Like I said, the Red Cross has moved, and Crystal and them have cleaned out the small office in the lobby that EIC will utilize. office in the lobby that EIC will utilize.
The RFP for consultant to give the subdivision zoning ordinance, has that, where is that issue?
It's been set out on the North Carolina planner list.
That's where the RFP has been out of the county?
Yes.
Not gonna be any?
This has not been released to our newspaper. There's not any consultants that I'm aware of that takes the Gates County index, the planner does have, the planning listserv, they do have consultants on there because several had contacted me in regards to a couple of other questions that I had put out on the listserv. So I do know that there are at least three or four consultants that do have this RFP process.
Well, normally we put it on our website.
Yes, it will be placed on website. The applications are due back on September the 19th. Oh, excuse me, not the 19th, the 23rd.
Also, uh municipal engineering, I saw an email this morning.
Yes.
And it appears that the swamp scientists have completed that, they have to develop their reports now, so that was uh.
All right, the case at testing has been completed.
Any other comments? Question? All right, thank you, County Manager. Our financial report, um, just before you, say if you have anything to add?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Chairman George, I can ask a question about this. It seems like advertising is running high on some of these, in some of these forms already, and we're just in the first month.
Some of it is, is job ads, they're extremely expensive and that's what the budget is.
Because I was hoping they had done over, they're almost pulling their budget for it already.
Absolutely.
I noticed there's two budget amendments. One is under 100, it's a hundred and thirty-one dollars. Are they coming up later, sorry?
They were done as administrative amendments?
Administrative.
Yes, sir.
And this is just done the approval?
Right, per the budget ordinance, these can be done administratively and be approved by the county manager and the county attorney, that's the information.
Okay. We have the personnel report, well, yeah, tax report, tax uh.
Good morning.
Morning.
There's really nothing to report as far as the collector's report. Um, the report that you had before you this morning does include the guns that were collected through DMV. When the original report was emailed to you, we didn't have those figures available to us. But unless y'all have any questions, I really don't have anything to report on that.
We have uh one thing we'd like to find out from you. Our tax collections for the year 2014 is pretty much a standard procedure. The notices have gone out, they're basically due January, by January 5th, I believe, with 2015. However, from 2013 back to 2004, uh, could you provide the commissioners, basically according to Joe Statian, a synopsis and detailed uh description of what is being done to bring those in as a collector's report, as a closeout?
You, you will have a closeout report from me at the, in September.
And what is, what is being done to bring those in?
I can include that. Basically, it's garnishments. Today, we will be sending letters, I think we have around a few over 1,200 letters that will be going out for those that will be going into debt, set off programs, that garnishments, tax, foreclosures if it comes to that.
And the reason I bring that up is uh, every time I thought you were, you were another year, but still not.
I think so.
But uh, there is a, a closeout that is required, I think it's Joe Statian 105,350, maybe one of those, whatever the number is, and it uh, it allows commissioners to know uh what is being done as you turn this over and leave this position, uh to make sure that those parts come in, because if it's not, then we're, we're kind of left out there on the hook, and we're responsible for them, so to speak. Basically Statian said, look forward to that, that report.
Okay, you'll have that at first spot though. Thank you.
Right, thank you.
Chairman, I would like to make a note for the public. On the report, it shows that year to date, we collected taxes from 2004, '06, '07, '08, right on up to 2014, and the number we're working against is a small number, so that's good.
Yeah, it's coming out my way. All right. Next, I have personnel report, cabinet, there's no questions. Correspondence, organs of interest, county calendar. We have a rescheduling of December meeting.
Yes, sir.
All right, all right. County Administration Course meets the week of December 1st. Board of Commissioners meeting is scheduled for December 3rd. We'd like to reschedule that meeting to December 10th, and that would be?
The following Wednesday. It'd be the second Wednesday of December.
I think the statute requires that commissioners have a meeting on Thursday, we pushed it to Wednesday, or I think it said tomorrow as determined by the committee of board. I think we have the flexibility there to probably do that. Any comments from the board or a little bit of the temp? We don't have a second meeting ever.
Yes, sir. Certainly gives it enough of a vast warning, I think it would be possible.
All right, we would need a motion to reschedule our December 4 meeting from December 3rd to December 10th.
Make that motion.
Thank you. Motion, say it, all in favor, aye? Aye. All in person, aye? All right, uh, historic courthouse renovation update. Also, just before we go there, we do have a memorandum from our Department of Board, she's taking a knee, vacation, and uh, from September 17th to the 20th, we return, or the 22nd, I believe, all right? Um, will not be accessible for the 22nd to the 27th. Return on the 21st. Just make a note of that.
I think we all threw quiz really well since this just taking off to get married.
Oh, all right. Congratulations, very well. Okay, uh, historic courthouse.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Could we set a date for the county extension, since we've got the calendar right here in front of us at this time? Don't we have to have a meeting with?
Yeah, that's number 9.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
There you go. Okay, um, County Manager, would you want to walk us through this?
I met with members of the Historic Society, including Commissioner Hopler, with Ray Thomas on August the 13th. Mr. Thomas was very pleased with all of the work that has been done to date on the courthouse. He was very pleased with the plans that are being made. The Historic Society discussed with him how to go about refurbishing the east wing, and he, he also made recommendations on the outside because there are concerns with the trees and the drainage. As you are aware, the lower level, the basement of the courthouse in the back, it still has some flooding issues when the, when there are heavy rains and the winds blow a certain way. We discussed with Mr. Ray the possibility of removing the trees, and he said, yes, he did not see a problem with removing those trees. They obviously were not there 200 years ago. I actually have pictures from, I believe it was Mr. Zellweger, that show, or someone with Andrews and Company that shows that the trees were planted, I believe, in the 70s. So he recommended removing those trees, and when we removed those trees, to do some landscaping on the west side of the building to help with the flooding issue. He also recommended that we go ahead and purchase some of the cheap corrugated plastic to put on the drain spouts to direct the water towards the street and away from the building, because if you finish, if you want to go and look, the side of the yard goes at an angle like this towards the back of the building. So the water does settle at the back wing where the old jellies be, and then it runs down the steps into the basement, and that is what's creating a problem. I know that there have been several people over there working to try to alleviate the problem through other measures, and that was not helping or solving the problem. We, he also said that there's a tree that is on the east side of the building that needs to be trimmed, that is currently on property owned by the town of Gatesville, so I can talk to Elton Winslow about trimming that tree back to assist with moisture problems on that side, which prevent moisture problems. Also, there were several commissioners, Commissioner Felton, Hopler, Turner Jordan met with the architects and the engineers on Friday, August the 15th, because of some design differences. As you can tell, work has stopped, they've been at standstill since August about the 18th or 19th. They came over after that Friday, came following Monday, finished what they could do on the inside and left. They have installed the horizontal beams under the second floor and under the first floor walls. However, this far end wall where the wood is holding up and supporting the structure, that is where there's an issue. The contract, I mean, excuse me, the engineers are supposed to be giving us a recommendation on how to fix that issue. It was my understanding that they would have had that done last week, and we have not received anything by the time I came over at 9:00 for a personnel meeting. So I am going to follow up to, with Zellweger and to find out the status of that, so that we will know how much longer the scaffolding will remain on this. We also discussed paint. I know Mr. Eisen is here today, he has started power washing, he has, I saw yesterday, brought in the lift, and they have started, they were also supposed to work on glazing the windows, they, their contract says they can do everything except for the west wing. On his contract, it does have three colors that he is to purchase and paint the building with, and we just want to make sure those are still the same colors. There were just numbers on there, so I do not know if that's still what you wish to proceed with, but he has not purchased paint, but he does need us to say that, yes, proceed or no, do not proceed with paint purchase. And they would, do you remember exactly the exact colors?
Yes, on the lighter gray, we've got dark grays, they got a 25, 34, we have antique whites for the body.
Do you mind coming to tell you?
Could I speak to that? The gray is for the windows, and you look at windows now, the windows are gray and the seals are a different color, gray.
Yes, yeah, the lighter gray.
And the ice side, instead of being a mustard color, it'd be more of a cream color, more like maybe the old bank overlay that, that's Pitt's office, it's a creamy color.
Yeah, it's like an antique white?
Yes.
For the body.
So we got gray and a off-white.
Yeah, off-white for the, I got the colors here, if you want to look at them.
Yeah, bring them, so they can see.
Ms. Offler, is these colors been researched, what it was back then?
Well, we talked to Ray Thomas about that. Probably, it might not have been painted, I mean, it was brick first, and then they put stucco on it. The stucco probably had to be cured, it probably, it might have been whitewashed, but White chose so much dirt, and he talked to the, Mrs. Brinkley, what is? He thought that the cream was, um, it, Mrs. Brinkley, am I stating the?
That's correct. And they are also filling in the cracks as they come to them.
And re-glazing it with?
Right, re-glazing with those.
I'm satisfied with the color, whatever our, our committee has already figured out.
You don't want to go with red and blue.
I am totally satisfied with the color that's already figured out.
I don't think it matches your eyes, but you're okay with it.
All right, so we need an approval, off stage?
Well, it's already been approved, but I know that there had been discussion about what were those the correct colors, so we just wanted to reconfirm today that that was the color he needed to purchase.
Mr. Hobie, you want to make that motion?
Yeah, I want, I want to make the motion that we go with the three colors that have been selected.
Second. All right, it's been motioned, I guess the P4, P5, W6119. Okay, all the colors, all in favor, aye? Aye. On those names, okay. Thanks, thank you.
Thank you. We have received a quote on removing the trees. However, the gentleman who provided the quote said that he would prefer to wait until the west wing work is complete and all scaffolding is removed. We have had a few people ask, could he go ahead and remove the tree at the far backlot from us, closest to the parking lot? So I will contact him to see if that is a possibility, if he's able to come and remove that tree, leave the others until the construction is complete. That would probably enable, he's shaking his hand, make it easier for the paint crew, and it would also help some of the rain issues that we have. And that is not close to the scaffolding? Correct.
I, you know, if I'm not looking, we're right at the courthouse up here, but I'm surprised, I know where the scaffolding is, we're talking about this wing over here where it's been more red. I'm surprised that, that that tree would be a problem taking it down. I mean, you cut the limbs off that tree, and then, I mean, because I've already made notes up here, recommendations that I'm going to give to you. When we're talking about this water, sorry, Mr. Chairman, if you would, if I may, go ahead. My recommendation, recommendation to you is, my, it's uh, the most urgent thing is the flooding and changing the elevation of that lot so that the water does not run, that causes a problem. It's, to me, it's, it's real simple. It's, to me, it's real simple. We need to go ahead and decide, real soon, what the end result is going to be for parking and the landscaping and all of that. And go ahead and pull some dirt away, close that street around the back there, and close it off. And get the water, every drop of water that runs, fallen away from that building. And we need to go ahead and do that. I also have now here to remove all the trees. And I think we need to ask the gentleman, that tree's not a real big tree. And if he delims that tree, it's working with a light bulb. So I don't think we should wait on the trees. And I think we should get in fast gear on going ahead and just pulling dirt. We don't, if we get the slow product, we don't have to have the finished product until we finish the courthouse with Hopler. But if we get that dirt, that water going in the right direction, we'll wait, have it in.
And Mr. Thomas did make other recommendations that we both made notes on about how to help with some of the drain off issues that we can investigate a little bit further.
May I speak? Commissioner Orson, I was the one who said, let's start going ahead and getting some of these trees done and not wait, because this is the fall of the year, you know, one month, it gets wet, it gets muddy. I do, I agree, I do think we need to go ahead and get the trees done. It'll help the parent, but also it can help, you can't do anything like drainage and pulling dirt until those trees are gone.
Natalie, somebody, I think there was in this note here about the sidewalks also. Was there going to be some tearing up or removing of some sidewalks there and replacing, or?
We'll have to talk to County Gatesville about that. Because what Ree Thomas, when we discussed, he said, if you can pull the landscape so it drains towards the street, well, as you're probably aware, that sidewalk is-
Up high.
Up high. And they did discover at least one drainage ditch that had been covered up through work that was conducted out there on the side, that side street. That drainage ditch has been unclogged. And Andrews and Company, they did say that the French drain that is around the building, it is working. Because they said after one of those heavy rains a couple of weeks ago, they came to work on Monday and it was dry.
But the drain was closed at the street, and they've been cementing over.
Yes.
So that's, you know-
That's a problem.
That was a problem, it's holding water. And I just open it this time.
Correct. So that would be, I'll talk to Gatesville about that, since that is their sidewalk. I will talk to them and find out if we can, if that can be removed so that we can sleep, do some proper landscaping. It was also recommended that perhaps instead of us just going and doing it, or hiring someone to do it, they also suggested having a civil engineer draw up plans. So it's just a recommendation. But what my suggestion is, until we can get the trees taken down, is to get the black pots and go ahead and drain some of that water away for now, until the tree company can come and get those down. And I will contact them to see if they can come as soon as possible to take the trees down.
One of my questions would be, and this is something you're probably going to have to research, does the Department of DOT provide any money or assistance in sidewalks? I know in the past, I have been through the, with DOT. This was something that we discussed, was sidewalks and stuff in and around Gatesville. And I think that we need to research a little more to see if they could come up with some funds or assistance in that.
But even designing?
Or in designing, I mean, several different aspects of it.
I potentially mentioned that during the last CTP meeting with the Department of Highway. That was discussed. And I think, and the next meeting, that would be a good place to bring it out.
Right.
I know, I think when Wade asked you, and myself, and Crawford, Nick, we went to a husky, to a meeting over there with DOT, and this was some of the things that were discussed. So I know they have done it in the past. Let's do a little research, see what you find out, if there's still, if there's some money out there.
May I make one more statement? On the east wing, you may reference to that. The Historic Society is going to try and take responsibility in doing that. For the county.
All right. Thank you, County Manager. A new business, Personnel Board Recommendation. I think we have one here, and we're going to have another one as well. In your package, the Personnel Board met on August the 6th of 2014 to discuss certifications that the building ground personnel need to maintain. And I was decided, due to the age and condition of the buildings, that the personnel should have LED and asbestos certification. And Personnel Board looked at what's involved, and maintained those certifications, the classes, whatever, and recommended an increase, a step increase. Personnel Board would like to recommend a step increase for the building grounds. Personnel will obtain both a LED and an asbestos certification. Increase will be accepted the first of the next month on recertification. And they must maintain the certification to keep the increase. If they lose the certification, then they would lose the, uh, the pay recognition for that maintaining that certification.
Mr. Chairman, do we have anyone that's already certified? So, no, is this just a recertification?
Yes, there are two people on staff that currently have certifications.
What is the Board?
Mrs. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the step increase for building grounds to maintain, or who receive or maintain their LED and asbestos certification.
Second. Right, motion second. In further discussion, all in favor? Aye. All right, the next item has to do with the corporate extension being awarded annually. And it also, the county would be asked to participate on the percentage basis that we go on and participate in funding the corporate extension offer. And I think, since we have a corporate extension aid here, you probably can talk to us a little bit better about it than I can. So it-
Who's taking the name?
Hi, this year the state decided to give employees bonus leave. We haven't gotten a raise in over five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, whatever years. So a couple of times they have given us leave, and we have given us a raise. And because you all pay a percentage of our salary, we have to ask if you will honor that percentage on the leave. If not, we only get the portion that the state pays us. And in my calculation, it amounts to about a day and a half of what you would be approving for our leave.
I think currently, the state provides 70%.
Approximately.
Why, and the county provides approximately 30%. So I guess it's what we would be doing is automizing, uh, a day and a half. It's about five days that the state has given us. People work hard.
We work more than hard.
What's the Board?
Chairman, you got a number? Is there numbers that can be drawn out?
No, because if you took the five days and did it times 30%, that's about how much you would be approving per person.
How many employees are we talking about?
You were talking about the two secretaries, and ag agent, court agent, foreagent, and myself. So it would be six.
Six personnel. Wait till about 10 days is what the county would be providing. Is that right, about 10 days?
If you did, six times 1.5.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve that, that request.
Mr. Chairman, I would second that. And I certainly feel that we need to match, you know, what the state is doing and what they're offering. We need to follow suit with that. And our four employees are good employees, and they deserve these things, you know, even from the state level, I don't matter, they need our support also. So I would second that.
Chairman, right. The motion is second. They will provide the additional funding. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Go ahead. Okay, uh, next item is the surplus plus property, the 12 by 30 concrete building located in the administration building. In our last meetings, we did stipulation that the Animal Control Agency in John County would make a decision whether or not they would use it within the next six months or whatever. And they have chosen not to deceive that building. So now they need to put it back on Gov. Deals. And we will need the Board to make that proposal and motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would go ahead and make the motion that we put this on Gov. Deals. We offered it to them at free cost, they did not want it. And we discussed earlier that it be put on Gov. Deals, and that would be my motion, go ahead and do that. Let's move forward.
I can have a motion to put it on Gov. Deals?
Second.
Right, motion second. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? All right, the next item is the appointment of the Gates County Aging and Adult Services Task Force. Commissioner Jurney decided to leave, wants to retire again.
You're penalized.
And so, to leave that position vacant, I think it was a, I think, in the past, it was not an appointed position, but it was one that commissioners participated in because it was a community need. But now we're being asked to replace the commissioner on that task force. And I would suggest to the Board that we do have some options. I think the earliest that someone would participate would be after our November election. And if we wanted to wait until Commissioner Jurney would replace them, to see if the new commissioner would want to serve more than, I think, most of the commissioners here, we've all got-
That's how you get on, what you got.
We've got a play pool, brother. Is that, is that the, um-
Chairman, that'd be a favorite.
Okay. All right, if you will, uh, make that, this is the item.
Mr. Chairman, I'd also like to say that there's several other boards that she will see my name on, that y'all would have to fill also.
I think a new candidate is going to have his hands.
Yes.
All right. Okay, um, I guess we do need formally address that and to table the appointment until our December first meeting, the county meeting. So move.
Second.
That's motion second, and we will table the appointment to the Gates County Aging and Adult Services Task Force until December. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Okay, uh, any other citizens coming?
The things for the corporate extension strategic meeting.
Oh, yeah. Excuse me. Give us a little bit of-
Commissioner Felton and I watched the webinar, which unveiled the corporate extension vision. And Riva Green-Holly and Trice Park have submitted three dates that they are available to discuss with all the commissioners and myself, the rollout and the implementation of this new process. And the dates are September the 23rd at 4:00, or September 24th, or the 25th. I had one response that said September the 23rd at 4:00 worked the best. But we do need to decide a date today because- How many counties does Tribe cover now? One, some, okay, 22 other counties. So he has 21 other boards to meet with on this issue. It will, the discussion will center on funding for effective July 1st of 2015 and beyond.
We anticipate the funding ratio to change?
Yeah. Yes.
Up or down?
And that was all explained in the webinar. And they did record the webinar, so I can send out the link for those who are unable to participate. So you can do that. I also have some handouts that I forgot to bring with me, and I do apologize. That explains what was talked about during the webinar. So I will make sure that you get those.
It sounds like we already can get there. And, uh, I'm fine with September 23rd at 4:00. Anyone else?
And that is a Tuesday.
What's that, 4:00?
In the boardroom?
That's fine, unless you prefer in your auditorium.
It's going to be easier for you?
Let's do the auditorium, in case I need to pull it up.
Okay.
Or you'll pull it up on your big screen, though.
Absolutely, sir.
And supper, is that right? The snacks.
Dip in, get this coffee, buy him a sauce.
We've already, we've already given 1.5 days.
Figure of buying sauce.
Oh, we hope we got that long.
And what, do you have any idea how long that will probably last, an hour?
Probably about an hour with the discussion. I would say no more than an hour and a half.
All right, September 23rd at 4:00. That's agreeable with everyone. We don't need to promote that, we just wait until that, okay? All right, uh, is there something else in these citizen comments? All right, Commissioner comments. Commissioner Felton, what's your comment?
Once again, appreciate everybody coming. We've got a little turnout today, we have had. And as Earl, when he was here talking about Johnny Moore, we all wanted to remember him, and he was a friend to a lot of us. On a personal note, as fire department, Johnny did all of our tax workforce, and of course, bring of charge. And he was a big help to us in the community. Just appreciate him, remember him, and remember his family also. Thank you.
I agree with Commissioner Felton, and certainly Commissioner Horr brought some skills to this table that none of us have. And we sorely missed him, and I'm sure I miss it's not as much as what his family does. Once again, thank you for coming. I hope you have a wonderful rest of the afternoon. And, you know, we appreciate so much for your attendance here.
Certainly, I appreciate, and thank everybody that came today. Also, back to Mr. Horr. When Earl started talking earlier, it almost bothered my mind that he was arguing with you.
you. Because, you know, time goes on, and people have to heal, and we do, do miss him, and just some of his expertise and his knowledge of finances, so, and we're thanking you for coming.
It has been a year, and it has come quickly. We do continue to appreciate some of the things that Commissioner Horr brought to the table. He caused us to look deep into some things, and brought up some things and created some changes. And we're a better board, better county for that, so we thank him for his service, and extend our, continue to extend our thoughts and prayers to his family. We do miss him here. I do want to clear up one thing that Mr. Rowntree said, and that is that we did not have an illegal vote, that that condition of closed session is closed session, and we don't, we discuss a closed session, and when we come out closed session, if there's something that we vote on, it can't be fully stated in an open session, meant because it's closed session. But we do discuss it, debate it, and then when we come out, we vote on it. And I would say the real, going back to Commissioner Joy's comment, probably 99 and not 100% of the items discussed and voted on, discussed in closed session and voted on in open session, eventually are voted on in open session with discussion. And many of those, some of those require public hearing. So eventually, that does come out when it can be disclosed. There was no illegal vote, and I think all of this, and Mr. Rowntree might have misunderstood Commissioner Felton's comments. Thank you for being here.
I do want to thank everyone for coming, and we do appreciate your participation and support. It means a lot to know that you're concerned about county government, because it starts right here. I always say that, you know, we're interested in Washington, and we should be, but your local government is where the actions are actually carried out, so we thank everyone for coming, and hope we continue to do so. Also, Commissioner Horr did bring a lot to the table, he was someone who gave it all as a commissioner. And I would suggest to the Board that in our completion of the old courthouse renovation, and John Horr was a member of the old courthouse committee, and he was a participant, that we would, in recognition of Commissioner Horr, somewhere put a plaque there, this recognition is dedicated to Commissioner Horr and Alex Keever, just maybe, and helping to make that come about, so that we'll have a lasting recognition of some of the things that he's done here in the county. If you make a note of that, and think about that in future discussions and approvals. Again, thank everyone for coming, and hope you have a great day. All right, we will need a motion to go in closed session, and of course, you're going to have to go on scratch, 143, 318, eliminate 3, 4, 5, and 6. So move?
Second.
Right, motion second, all in favor? Aye. All opposed? Thank you. I would need a motion to come out of closed session?
So move?
Second.
Right, motion second, all in favor? Aye. All opposed? All right, first item.
I'd like to fill out some. It was discussed with, the sheriff discussed with things a while ago with me about the, some of the restrooms here, the commodes and stuff are not flushing properly. I talked to Natalie, I would like the consensus of the board, she have, bring somebody in to check on these, and probably check on all of these commodes, make sure they're properly flushing. He says that they're hanging up on a regular basis, and people are not flushing them because of the problems with the handles and stuff, and I'd like to see her get somebody in here that would go ahead and correct this. And my recommendation would be to have them check all of the restaurants and facilities for that.
All right, I got something that, you know, you can build in the ground, you can probably get your buddy as well, and see what needs to be done. I think we need to figure out a directive on that.
Okay, I don't have a problem with that. All right. We need a motion to respond to the request from the county businessman as discussed in closed session. Mr. Chairman, I move that we notify that business person of our decision in closed session.
I have a motion.
Second.
Right, motion second, all in favor? Aye. All opposed? Okay, second motion would be to direct Al County Manager to contact Al County Attorney and research the liability issues in moving forward to allow the public use of the community center.
Mrs. Chairman, I so move.
Second. Right, motion second, all in favor? Aye. All opposed? All right, if there are no other comments, oh, yeah, we do have one.
If you would just please review this information from the library, and we can discuss this at our September 15th Board Commissioners Meeting, they're just asking for our support and requesting funding and that to be restored to 2011 levels, and we can discuss this more at our September 15th meeting.
All right, we'll have that on the agenda. All right, if there's nothing else, we'll call for a motion to adjourn. So move? Second.
Chairman, is that an impairment or a recess till 15?
Well, we won't modify that to recess until 15.
So move?
Okay. You have a second on that?
So?
All right. It's motion second, and if we recess out, kind of commissioner, board meeting until September 15th. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? All right.